We will call the meeting to order. I would ask that Trent please take the roll, which I believe he's probably done already. We have Supervisor Roser joining us on the phone, telephonically correct. Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm on the phone. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And so, you know, this will be an interesting kind of practice session because we're going to be here for a couple of months. And at this point, I will call on Supervisor Adam Fisher for the invocation. Adam's going to work his way up to the podium there. While he's doing that, I'd ask you to rise and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, can everybody hear me? All right, if you feel led, please bow your head and pray with me. Dear Lord, I just thank you for another day, and I thank you that we can be here to serve the people of Wood County. And as always, I pray that we would be mindful of those, our, those neighbors and those in our communities in this county who are in great need. We ask for your continued guidance in being good stewards of county resources and knowing how to best allocate those resources. We also, I pray for just peace in our hearts and amongst one another and in our nation. I thank you for those who have served and are serving. I thank you for our law enforcement, and we pray that you would continually keep all of them safe. I pray for wisdom as we make our decisions today, and I thank you for this meeting. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Fisher. Give you a minute to get back here. First order of business is dispensing with the minutes from the previous session, I entertain a motion to by fire second by LaFontaine. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye. opposed? And that motion carries. Under excuses today, we had Supervisor Valentine, but Laura's back with us, so glad to have you here, and we go right past that. We have no resignations today. Under appointments or reappointments to the Health and Human Services Committee for the term ending April of 2022, they would like to appoint, I would, Rebecca Spiros. I have a motion of that effect by Hamilton, second by Bry. Any discussion? Again, all in favor, signify by aye. opposed? And that motion carries. Do we have any public comment today? Any public comment? I don't see any public comments. We have no acknowledgements and recognitions. We're going to have a couple of special orders of business today, one by Sheriff Becker and one by Greg McTavish from Alliant Energy. This packet today is pretty short, and we're combining, unless we have objection, we're going to combine most of these resolutions without objection when we get to them, so I assume that this is going to run pretty quickly. Everybody good with that so far? All right. We move into the packet on page eight. We have referrals for January, and there were none. How quick this is, I think. The Operations Committee met on Tuesday, December 21st on page nine. There are minutes from January 7th on pages 10 and 11. We have the monthly comments from the clerk on 12. From Human Resources Department on pages 13 through 17. From the Treasurer on 18. And that brings us to page 19 in the packet. The next five or six pages are, there's five resolutions, there, all of these are housekeeping resolutions, every single one of these. So without objection, I'd like to take these together. Is there any objection? All right, I'd have the clerk please read those five resolutions.
This will be Resolution 22-1-1, to show additional elements of committed and assigned governmental fund balance projected as of December 31st, 2021. Fiscal note, total committed and assigned governmental fund balance as of December 31st, 2021 is projected to be $4,871,102. I'm not going to read them all.
He's not going to read them all.
I'm not going to read all those accounts.
No, not those. I thought you meant the next resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, we're taking five together.
As I said, we're practicing.
This will be Resolution 22-1-2, to amend the 2021 budget for capital improvement expenditures incurred in 2021 related to the 2021 general obligation refunding debt for the 2022 capital projects. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding are from debt proceeds in the 2021 debt borrowing. Adjustment to the budget totals $496,660. Resolution 22-1-3, to amend the 2021 budget for human services, Norwood Health Center, Edgewater Haven programs for transfer of available appropriation to functions where actual expenditures are recorded. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The additional appropriations needed for transfers are, are available and are not anticipated to be spent in the appropriations to be transferred out or are funded with additional provider relief funding. Adjustment to the budget totals $2678,000. Resolution 22-1-4, to amend the 2021 budget for Healthy Smiles for the purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, to transfer $3,000 from available fund ba, available balance and fund balance to Healthy Smiles, adjustment to the budget totals $3,000. Resolution 22-1-5, to amend the 2021 budget for county aid to libraries for the purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, to transfer $3,635 from available balance and contingency to the county aid to libraries. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $543,000. Adjustment to the budget totals $3,635.
Okay, you've heard the reading of those five resolutions. I have a motion by Hamilton, a second by Wagner. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Well, no, we're going to the board. Sorry about that. You ready?
Go.
Please vote.
Supervisor. Rosar, yes.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, and that resolution passed unanimously, and the system works well. All right, moving forward in the packet. Page 25, minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee from December 2nd. Health and Human Services Committee, December 16th on 26 and 27. The monthly update from the Health Department, pages 28 through 32, 28 through 32. And that's been a busy department this week. I have the opportunity to speak with or converse with Director Smith. I have trouble saying that yet, Sue, but, and we're working through some issues there and not at the department level, but within the community in some fairly high levels of COVID, and you guys have done a remarkable job. Moving on, page 33, the monthly comments from the Human Services Department. Director Ruwings begins that, page 33, runs through page 39. Takes us to page 40, where we have the minutes of the Public Safety Committee. That's 40 through 44. Same committee, Public Safety, their minutes from January 10th on 45 through 48. 45 through 48. And then we have all of the reports from the Sheriff's Department, beginning with the press release that was on 49 and 50. And then we go to various different, well, after that, we have the humane officers' reports, October through December on 51 through 58. Humane officers, 51 through 58. And then we get to various reports from the Sheriff's Department. They run from pages 59 through 98. They include the K-9, Crime Stoppers, the Rescue Squad, the jail numbers, electronic monitoring, kitchen. Anybody have any questions on any of those reports from the Sheriff's Department? Doesn't appear to be. Minutes of the Conservation, Education, Economic Development Committee from Wednesday, January 5th, beginning on 99, runs through page 104. 105, we begin the minutes of the Golden Sands Resource Conservation and Development Council. Those minutes of various committees and the board itself runs 105 through 113, 105 through 113. Any question on Golden Sands? Monthly update from UW Extension, 114, 15, 16, and 17. Our Land and Water Conservation Department, their monthly update beginning on 118, runs through page 123, 123. Update from Planning and Zoning, beginning with Director Grunberg's on 124. And that runs through page 131. Now, that's really fast. We've gone through a lot of stuff here. Is there anybody who missed something who wanted to go back? Did we run over anything too quick there? I see you guys' fingers scrolling as fast as you can on those iPads, trying to keep up here. All right, to the Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting of December 20th on 132 through 134, 132 to 134. Minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, January 7th, 135, 136, and 137. Various notices of injury and claim, pages 138 to 142. And then that takes us to the Child Support Agency, Director Ruwings' report on 143. The Criminal Justice Department with our new Criminal Justice Coordinators, letter to everybody on 144, and I'd recommend all of you at some point stop by and say hi. The Victim Witness Report on 145. Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee, their meeting of Thursday, January 6th on 146, 147, and 148. We have reports from the Highway Commission, beginning with the Highway Commissioners, Roland Hawks on 149, and those run through 154. Page 155, you have the Forestry Report, the revenue last year, which was exceptional. I don't see Chuck Bird in the room, but tremendous amount of revenue there. And then I have a question here. We have two resolutions here. One is the annual work plan, the other is the 15-year plan. Assume you've had a chance to cruise those. Does anybody object to running those two resolutions together? They're both reports, they've been worked on for a long time, they've been vetted by the committee. See Supervisor Lightnem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I don't have any objection to running them together, but looking at the first one, the fiscal note, should I be concerned with a potential loss of state aids of almost $50,000?
Trent?
No, only if you don't pass it. If you don't pass it, that's, then you lose the state aid.
Thank you.
It's a pretty good idea we get this done. All right, Trent, you want to read those two resolutions?
This will be Resolution 22-1-6, the approval of the 2022 Wood County Forest Annual Work Plan. Fiscal note, potential loss of state aid revenues of $49,180. Resolution 22-1-7, approval of the Wood County Forest 15-Year Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Fiscal note, none.
Okay, I have a motion by Hamilton, I have a second by Bry. Discussion? Any discussion? All right, I ask you please go to the board and vote.
Rosar, yes.
Thank you, Donna. Al, you're not in yet. Supervisor Bry. Thank you, and that resolution passed unanimously, those resolutions. And I know the, that Fritz and the rest of the committee did a lot of work on those long-term plans. I thank you for that work. Moving forward in the packet, page 158, minutes of the Property Information Technology Committee, their meeting from January 3rd, that's 158, 59, and 60. We have the update from IT, beginning on page 161, running through page 163, the updates from information technology. We have the letter of comments from Ruben Van Tassel, our facilities manager, on page 164. 165, the minutes of the McMillan Memorial Library, the Personnel Committee, their December 1st meeting. On 166, we have the meeting that I had called the other day to start the discussion as to where we're going to go with our ARPA funding, what we're going to do with that, how we're going to start that process. You know, while I'm there, and since we're like running way ahead of schedule, maybe not way ahead of schedule, but move along quickly, I just got back. I was concerned I might not get back here today, actually. I was out in DC and then New York, where we're having meetings in regard to ARPA funding. And they canceled 2,400 flights. Luckily, mine wasn't one of them, or maybe from your perspective, that's the unlucky part, but got out of there actually about 45 minutes late, because we had about a half-full plane. We actually landed almost on time yesterday and made it back. But we spent almost five days with other state presidents from their associations and some of the more well-known state executives discussing this. And I can tell you this, I know there's the want or need from some people to expend money, you know, rather rapidly, get some of this done. Most of them have taken a go-slow approach. The Counties Association, NACO specifically, probably New York with Senate Majority Leader Schumer and Graham Conos, who's the Executive Director from California, working with Speaker Pelosi, they're the ones that actually got this $10 million, you know, kind of free, they freed up the money, the first $10 million under the lost revenue without doing the calculations, to be used in whatever way that counties desired, provided it's a legal use of the money. You know, there's certain things you can't do, but we can't do that with anyone. There's about 3,143 counties, I believe, in the United States, and about 2,300 of those fall completely under that $10 million exemption. So what they did is freed up a whole bunch of work for all, you know, two-thirds of the counties in the United States, which is extremely beneficial to those and us specifically. So the sideboards, you've heard us talk about that often. We're hoping at some point, some of the rules will go away, some of the sideboards will come off to give us a little more latitude in what we can do with that money. Well, 10 million of the 14.1 million roughly falls under that current. And that doesn't mean we're going to go out and spend that right away, but it gives us a little more latitude. Certainly talk a little bit about, more about that as we get to operations and then put in place our ad hoc committee, that's how we're going to handle it. All right, moving forward. Oh, yes, Supervisor Clintanning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for municipalities getting $700,000 or something like that, does that come under the $10 million?
You know, I don't, I don't know if municipalities do. My assumption is yes. I don't know, but I'll check today. Supervisor Clintanning, when I leave, I, I know it did, it was county-specific in that regard, but I can't believe they're going to make a small municipality fill out all those reports if they got $200,000 or $300,000. I will, I will double-check for you. Any questions there? Any thoughts? All right, then we'll move forward in the packet, and this next resolution is to approve the fire warden list for 2022. I'd look for a motion of that effect by Supervisor Clintanning, second by Supervisor Fire. Any discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote.
Rosar, yes.
Thank you Supervisor Roser. And that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. The last page, or I guess on my desk, there was some news from Extension. We do have a couple of special orders of business today. First one would be Sheriff Becker. Sheriff, if you'd like to go up to the podium there.
Can you hear me now? Good. Ruben's going to stand up here with me if you do have any questions. Has everybody gotten the emails that I've sent out in reference, the renderings, what the facility is going to look like? If not, I could put it maybe up on the TV if you'd like, but if everybody's got it. So things have been coming together very well. The footprint has not changed at all. We've been meeting with a lot of vendors recently to decide the plumbing, electronics, electrical needs of the facility, generators, lighting, and a lot of that stuff is coming together. But what is the biggest question right now? Of course, cost. That's what we've been asked a lot, and we don't have an exact figure right now. I know we're going to be meeting after this with the ad hoc committee. Kurt Bernier, Project Manager from Samuel's Group, is going to have some preliminary numbers. I don't have that right now. All right, hopefully we'll get that relatively soon, especially meeting with all the other vendors that are going to be part of this project. We should start to get that information coming in relatively soon. Preliminary, you know, information that we've gotten, I think we all know that material costs are up right now, but I could not tell you exactly what that's going to look like. So hopefully we'll get a little bit more direction today and in the next few weeks where we, we kind of know where we're sitting cost-wise. Otherwise, it's coming together very well. The design of the project is, is really moving forward. And again, the footprint hasn't changed at all since we sent everything out to you, but we just have to wait on, on what those costs are going to be. Any questions at all right now for, for myself or, or Ruben?
Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I hear this in a lot of projects throughout the state, throughout the country. So, so what is our dropout saying, well, if it goes up a million dollars, we're going to have to wait and hold off on it? Is there such a thing as, as doing that? Or do we just keep telling everybody, well, the costs are going up, we still don't know the price? When do we stop or when do we say, yeah, we're going to go ahead and agree with it?
Great question. That, that comes back to you. You know, I, I don't know what it's going to be. We don't know what those costs are going to be, and we can anticipate it's going to be more than what we initially looked at, but we don't, we just don't know right now. And that's going to come back to the committee and the county board, what, what decisions you want to make moving forward with this project. I mean, it's a, it's a huge investment for our community, but we realize it's a need. It's been a need for a long time. We can't control the material prices right now. I wish we could, but it's just the way it is right now. But we're working very closely with, you know, our project manager. Ruben's doing an outstanding job of, you know, monitoring the project. What are the needs? You know, what, what does Wood County need in this facility and to tie it into our courthouse? I think it's looking, you know, with the renderings that we put together with the architect, it's looking very nice, but I, I wish I could tell you or guide you in what direction to go because I don't have that answer at this point.
And Bill, or Supervisor Clintanning, that's, you know, we will continue to clarify that. And, you know, this, I think, Sean, you touched on an important point, is we, we clarified the need. And, and although there might be some short-term escalation in cost of materials, that, that could come back down a little bit. The cost of a project like that is never going to go down in the future, and it's a facility we need. Now, there is a point in which you go, it just is unaffordable. I don't think we've reached that point, and we do have some options here moving forward. They will be clarified going forward. Ruben, did you want to add anything or Sheriff? Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on, we have Greg McTavish from Alliant Energy to give us, looks like he's got help with an update on the Wood County solar project. I'm guessing that Supervisor Lightnem has probably heard some of this already.
Let me see it over here. Yes.
Yes.
Just let me know when you want to advance your, your slides.
As loud as you can go.
Um, go ahead and advance this slide. Uh, just a little project overview. You know, we're building a 150-megawatt facility just south of town here. It's about 1,200 acres in the town of Saratoga. Construction is obviously underway, started that last year, and we're looking by the end of this year to be operational. So, you know, this is really not only, you know, we only, not only broke ground here on Wood County specifically, but this was really a groundbreaking for our program. And we're doing full projects over the next couple of years here in the state of Wisconsin. And it's really just, you know, our commitment to cleaner environment, carbon, you know, lower, reducing carbon dioxide emissions, and really a transition, not a coal and fossil fuel. So we're really excited about this program. Wood has been definitely, our wood site has definitely been kind of our groundbreaking to our program and our largest one to date so far. So it's, a lot of people like to come see this one. It's obviously pretty large in size, as many of you probably know. Go ahead, advance. Uh, so here's a little diagram. I feel this is sometimes helpful for those trying to figure out maybe how we capture the sun. So obviously, I, we have our solar panels that capture the sun. We then run those all in series to what's called here a conjunction box, but sometimes referred to as a combiner box. And well, that's what we're doing. We're just combining the power from the panels into a box, and then we're taking that from there over to our inverters. Our, our inverters is where we transform from DC to AC. Okay? And I think there's probably 30 or 40 inverters on our site, roughly. So from there, then we run cable back to our substation. So where you see like the AC collection panel, distribution board transformer, that's really our substation. I put a box around that, that'd be the substation. And from there, we transform the power up to our transmission line to distribute our power to customers. So that's kind of the process. Any questions? And by the way, if you guys want to have questions throughout, wave or interrupt me, that's fine. Answer questions as we go. So that's kind of solar in a nutshell, quick overview, so. I can go to the next slide. Just for site arrangement, I assume most of you know approximately where this project's at, but kind of the road down the center there is Range Line Road, but we're on the east and west side of Range Line. We pointed out our substation there, and that angle is kind of that, we're, we're putting in a, we call a gentile line, that will actually take the power up through the road to a new substation, ATC is building on Mill Road or Mill Avenue, I believe.
About a, about a mile east of 13.
Yep. So we'll take our power from there up to there. ATC will do the switching up onto the grid from there. But this is the overview. Any questions on that? Next slide. Next, I want to touch on a little bit about our pollinator program. Alliant has taken a pretty big initiative to, to adding some pollinator-friendly grasses and flowers and such to, to our sites, not just our solar sites, but our entire fleet. But we found it a really neat opportunity on our solar program to add quite a bit of it in a pretty easy way, right? So we've got, we buy a lot of this land, but there's definitely spots where we don't use, aren't putting panels. It's, it becomes a great opportunity for pollinator seed, so. But within the solar panel, we, we will be planting pollinator-friendly grasses as well, but we, we target those to be a little lower-growing grass, and that's for obvious reasons. We don't want four-foot grass blocking our panels, right? We won't be able to produce power. Yeah, go ahead. Yep, yep, most of it's native. There are a few non-natives in there. We work with the state on that and the DNR and picking the seeds. I can tell you, we got three projects in process right now. The seed mixes are changing for our next ones. We just trying to improve things with the state. They provide some suggestions for some different seeds, and we're doing our best, but I think as the sheriff talked about, sometimes commodity and pricing and things, sometimes we're having a hard time finding seed to the ones we want. So it's a bit of a balance in what we can get when the project's ready for it, so. But yes, yep. So then, that's it within the panel area, for obvious reasons, some lower-girl stuff. It's still friendly for even nesting birds and butterflies and such. And then we've kind of identified in the green areas, if you can see those, where we want to put some more, I guess, more pollinator-friendly stuff. We actually, to distinguish the two, we, we kind of call it our pollinator area, but there we'll add a few more pieces, species in that'll grow, that can, that'll grow higher and provide more habitat for birds, butterflies, bees, even ground nesting birds is the big one. And just, I think this site, there'll be about 40 or 50 acres of pollinator-friendly stuff, and then obviously the, the grasses we're throwing to panels, so. We're doing this at all of our sites. We're kind of have initiative to try to put as much as we can in for obvious reasons, so. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, next slide, please. Construction update. So today we're about 50% complete. We did finish putting in all of our piles, which is our foundation for the panels here not too long ago, actually. It has about 67,000 piles. So that was a big milestone for us. We finished pretty much all of our underground work that we needed to before winter. And now we're progressing into the actual tracking system and the panel. So we started installing the tracking equipment, which is basically what holds the panel and allows it to tilt with the sun. So we're putting in bifacial panels, so we'll actually get a little energy from the backside of the panel as well from reflection. Not a lot, but it's a little, might as well grab it if we can. So we just started receiving panels here recently. So we have, as we speak, we're putting in some of our panels, kind of working on our... Yep. Oh, yep. So there's a tube that runs on top of the piles. And there's a bracket that hooks to the tube. The panels hook, you know, the brackets will hold the panels on. And that tube actually runs on a motor that turns that tube, you know, turns the panel. Show you there, but... So yeah, our substation...
Are the brackets electric?
No, it'll be powered. No, they're like... Not a... Well, I have power. Probably come extra. Yeah. Our substation is also underway. I talked about the APC one. We're kind of partnered with them on that. They're building it for us. So we're partnered with them in that. But we're also building one that I like to try to distinguish the two because sometimes it can get confusing, why do you have two substations? I call what I call ours, the collector sub. So that's where we're collecting all the power from the solar field. And then we're sending it to APC to distribute. So that's what I like to call it, simpler terms and maybe cause confusion on why we have two, but that's why. So, but that's underway. We've got all of our foundations in. I believe we're starting to set equipment, deal there. So that's all going well. If I miss anything else. We do have a lot of electrical, above ground electrical as well. So some of the electrical is actually going to be above ground. And it's basically kind of a fancy cable tray, right? We call it a cab system. It's actually a brand, but most of our string cables that go to the panels is all above ground. So that's going on right now as well. We're selling that. So through the winter, we'll be doing panel install, tracker install, above ground electrical. Keep this kind of moving through the winter. Fast as we can in this weather. So it's accounted, but that's kind of the scope for the winter. You can go ahead and switch. Next slide, please. Just talk a little bit about a little economic boost here. I'm sure maybe you guys have seen it. I don't know. A lot of our guys are staying in Rapids here. But we've got about 130 workers on site. Our partner in this is Burns and McDonald, who's a large contractor out of Kansas City. But they actually also own ASCO, which is out of Appleton. So we're using them for, as our partner in getting this thing built. We're also, they're also partnered with, it's all local union labor. So the carpenters, laborers, operating engineers and IBW electricians are all supporting the project. It is all local union labor being used out here at the site. So we will probably ramp up in spring a little bit more, just with the cooler weather. We're not overextending ourselves some days. But once the weather warms up, we'll be ramping up probably close to 200 people on site. Next slide. Pretty proud of this one. We really strive for zero injuries on our sites. And so far at Wood and actually all three of our current sites under construction, here particularly, we're 150,000 hours worked with zero reportable injuries. So that's been fantastic. Can't thank the guys enough for the way they work and the conditions they're working in right now is not ideal and doing a great job there. So very proud of that and look to continue that through the remainder of the project. So next slide, please. Back in November, we actually had mid-state, some mid-state technical college students come out and take a look. We worked with their professor and I forgot his name off the top of my head here to get them out there. But we had about 30 students. Ended up being on a great weather day, so we were a little worried about it. But I think they, they really, it was a really neat program, I thought. Really cool you guys have that right here in town and we're building a bunch of larger ones in the state right here. So we expect to have them back in the spring. We wanted to get them out and kind of give them kind of a, the whole process of construction. So they got to see some of the underground yet, I think, before we got that done, some of the piles going in. And we'll get them back in the spring to take a look at the panels going and stuff. So really neat program. And I think our contractors were excited about it too, right? Because they're likely maybe hiring some of these guys. And I know even from Alliant Energy's perspective, these guys maybe work for us someday or great, right? So cool, cool deal you guys got here in town and looking forward to that partnership moving forward. So good, switch sides. So I talked a little bit about what's next, I guess, but, you know, we're going to progress through the winter. It's going to be a little slow, but steady with the weather. We'll work when it's nice. Kind of the nature of construction in Wisconsin. And we will be, by the end of this year, we're looking to be putting some power on the grid. Next slide. This is a slide here just kind of shows our public outreach we've been doing. So we've got a project website that there's a link here for. We also are sending out quarterly newsletters to give updates to the community on, I don't know if some of you have seen those or not, but to give everybody an update there. And then we've got our local outreach here too with our operation facility, which is Greg and some of the other account managers and stuff in the area. So I think we've been putting a lot out there. Hope some of you've been able to take, take in some of that and stay updated as well. But next slide, please. Like I kind of mentioned earlier, this is one of 12 projects. We've got six approved right now and we're looking to get six more approved here by, I think in June. Just to give us a 12 total. So you can kind of see they're, they're spread out throughout the state on the right there. You know, we're looking at this, give, you know, total project, 12 projects is going to create like 2,000 jobs throughout the state. And the tax rev, the local community is going to receive estimated 130 million in tax revenue over the next 30 years as well. I think Wood County here, I think you guys will be sharing with the town a $600,000 roughly here in Wood County. So... Like I said, this is definitely a start to our move into renewable energy. And it's all part of our kind of larger clean energy blueprint at Alliant Energy where we're really moving away from fossil fuels and into the renewable world and some really cool technology out there. And it's being put right here in Wood County. And we're really excited about Wood County site and moving forward with our program. Go ahead, sir. Yeah, the panels are not from the United States.
Where are they from?
They are, they are from China. China is the panel manufacturer.
And the recycling of those things, because I'm a recycling nut, but the recycling of those with the tornadoes and the stuff going on in the United States right now, what happens if there's a big tornado that's out there and just destroys it? Is that still up our gums? Where does that stuff carted off? Is there a plan for that?
There is. I don't know about the tornado going through and destroying them all. I do know that long-term, obviously, technology is going to change. We're assuming we're going to get better technology and we'll probably end up replacing. I know the recycling program really is, there's, we're going to be reusing these panels. We really think there's a second market for these, right? They're, I think the, in 30 years span, the rating is these will still be like 80% efficient after 30 years. You know, that might not work for a utility scale, right? But that might work for residential. I don't know, you're building here, right? I, you know, where, I think that's going to be the recycling market, it may be some reuse there. There are some people recycling them or actually working on some, what we're going to do with the panels right now because just truth be told, they get shipped from a long ways away, right? We end up getting damaged panels inside. So we are working with some companies that do take them for recycling. The exact recycling process, I cannot speak to. I don't know enough about that, sir. I could purely drop that question down and we can get back to you on exactly how these are recycled. But we have no intentions of landfilling these panels. We are going to try to find any way we can to make them recyclable, whether that's reusing them or finding somebody that's going to, you know, pull the aluminum off the frame and use those for something or what, the exact process I don't know. Answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Lightnum.
The town of Saratoga has a developers agreement with the Wood County solar project. So as far as the disposal of the 30-year-old panels in 30 years, they would not stay on site. They would be removed according to the terms of the developers agreement. We looked into problems with that and there are heavy metals in solar panels. So we as Saratoga residents would not want them on site. And hopefully, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if this is the time to do it or not, but most of you are aware, there's a second project in Saratoga. It's called the Saratoga Solar Project, immediately east of this Wood County solar project. I'm saying that because next Monday at 6:30 PM at the Saratoga Town Hall, there will be a meeting for residents, and of course it's open to anybody, about the second project, which is carbon copy. It's the identical 150 megawatt size.
No, I appreciate that Supervisor Lightnum. I would highly recommend any of those supervisors who have not driven by the site to do that, just to see the scope of the project. It's huge. Alliant is moving to all solar, all their new projects are solar generation projects. For those of you, all of you received the report from Dale Knapp's report from Forward Analytics. And it, there was an unidentified county where they looked at the economic impact. The unidentified county was Wood County. Dale works for the Wisconsin Counties Association, so we used our county. And it, it kind of shows the dollars that are there. To Supervisor Lightnum's point, you're looking at about doubling the size, the footprint of the project. But the construction project itself was, was pretty remarkable. I mean, I, I tried to put up a fence and I can't get two posts straight. And they've got, I think you said 67,000 or 69,000. Special machinery was actually developed to do that. You watched, I think that was on Discover Wisconsin or TVX.
Yeah, yeah. Build Wisconsin, I think it's called.
I think Mark Rose did that project. But I highly recommend you go there and I recommend that if you have interest, you attend the Saratoga meeting as Supervisor Lightnum just mentioned.
I will just mention, Alliant Energy is not associated with that second project at this juncture. So we are more focused on the one we got and the 12 others. But I think Savion is the developer there that'll be giving you guys that presentation, I would imagine, which we purchased from this one. So, but yeah, that's not in our future as we sit here today. Can't answer a lot of questions about that if you have any, but anything about the one we do have, feel free to ask. Yeah, if you haven't been down there, it's a pretty cool site. Right now is not a great time to come take a look at things closer, but you know, you guys can reach out to Greg or myself, you got my contact. There's a, you guys are looking for a little closer view. Sometimes a tour guide.
I appreciate the presentation here because we do get the updates. I don't know how those are disseminated across the entire region, but we certainly get those. They get sent to us directly. I'm sure the Saratoga, Bill, do the, or Supervisor Lightnum, the Saratoga residents as a whole get those updates that come across or you guys disseminate?
Yes, electronically, on by mail.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Alliant? Go ahead Supervisor LaFontaine.
We plows and blowers and get it out of our way as best we can. Luckily, we haven't had a ton of snow, right? I mean, I think I read on the news, our numbers are a little down, but we just pushing it out of the way and, you know, if we get a lot, we'll have to get loaders and dump trucks and haul it off to one of our lay down yards or something to get it out of the way. But it's a challenge. We're, we're wearing ice creepers or the yak tracks to try to keep our footing. You know, some days we just can't work because we're spending the day removing snow, right? But there's no real special way other than traditional equipment. We just got to get out there early in the morning and get it cleared for the guys. But, yeah. Oh, on them. So they do tilt, right? So we can actually, in a snowstorm, actually tilt them up to pretty much, I guess, completely up and down so we won't get any snow accumulation on them. It's likely in a snowstorm, we're not going to be generating a lot of power because it's typically very cloudy. So that would probably be one way to keep them off. But you got to remember they're black and they're actually get really hot, right? When there is sun. So it actually melts right off. These panels can get really, really hot with a lot of sun. So they actually kind of clean themselves a little bit. Now, in some drier climates in the south, there's a lot more into the washing of panels because dust and not a lot of rain. We're in a part of the world where we get enough rain accumulation and snow that it actually kind of cleans the panels itself a little bit. We will have to do some cleaning, but not quite as much as a, like I say, a project in the desert, something like that. So, but that's kind of our way to, to get around that. That answers your question.
Yeah. Supervisor Curry.
On-site every day? No. These facilities just don't require that. Greg likely will, we haven't figured out our operational plan exactly yet, but it's going to be probably a few guys. They won't be probably 100% dedicated. I don't want to put words in Greg's mouth, but I think that's basically, we'll have some guys operating, but it's not a all-day-long, seven-days-a-week job. Yeah. No, they're just, there's definitely people to be monitoring it from all the technology we'll have on it and...
we'll have on it, and be kind of sending guys out as needed if we have a panel that's not producing the way it's supposed to, to check things out. But we're not expecting a full-time guy on-site. So, but the contractor thing, it's an option. I'll just, I mean, we're looking at it, not me and Greg probably, higher than us. But we have 12 sites throughout the state. Some are located really nice and close to some of our facilities, some aren't. But sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't maybe, and so we're trying to balance that. But I would think, even if a contractor was doing the maintenance, it's likely going to be open to, you know, the local to apply, right, for that. So, you know, how exactly that looks, we don't know yet.
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
Any of the other board members? Any questions? Maybe as we move further down the road, and the panels are installed, and we get to spring, maybe we can actually arrange a tour out there.
That'd be fantastic. We're more than willing to provide that. We'll stay in touch or reach out, and reach out to Greg if you want, if you got his contact, and he can, we'll get it set up. But we're more than willing to give it a tour. Hopefully, I answered any questions you had today. Hope you learned a little bit about the wood site, if you didn't know about it. And appreciate you having me today. We're super excited about the project, and happy to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other business that needs to come before the board here real quick? Supervisor Ashback? Supervisor Han. The next meeting is scheduled for February 15th, and unless something changes, because they decided to run the National Association Legislative Conference that week, Supervisor Fisher will be running that meeting as the chair. And like I said, unless something changes, and things change every day, when I was out in DC, they were totally masked again. Stuff shut down, although they are seeing a large decrease again, starting this week, or I think it was Saturday or Sunday, they were seeing numbers come way down. So, I don't know what that will bring, but the intent right now is to be out in DC that week. Anything else? All right, seeing none, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.